It looks like we are recording. Good morning. My name is Alexis Morris and I'm the board administrator for today's work session, November 7th, 2024. It's a reminder that this meeting is being recorded. Chair Stevens, we're ready to begin.
Okay, thank you so much. This is a work session for the board with the agency staff. Attendees from the public are welcome to observe. The chat function as well as the attendee cameras and microphones will be turned off. If you would like to submit public comment, please do that through the ODAB website for the December 5th board meeting. And I will turn it back over to you Alexis for roll call.
All right, thank you Chair Stevens. Sarah Lucas?
Present.
Thank you. Bill Graup?
Present.
Thank you. Brian Prang? And it looks like he is in, I gave you a mic access Brian, you should have that. Okay, we'll come back to Brian. Catherine Stevens?
Present.
Jeff Pritchard? I am not seeing Jeff in, but he may be late. I have not heard from him yet, so we'll come back to him. Steve Nagy?
Present.
Thank you. And Jim Knight?
Present.
All right, and then Brian, are you here? Brian Prang?
Yes.
All right, perfect. Thank you Brian. And still no Jeff, so hopefully he will join us shortly. And that completes roll call. You're ready to begin?
Great, thank you so much. So for this work session today, we are going to have an OGEC Public Meetings Law Training. And joining us today is Charlie Esparza and is Ruth here as well? Ruth Sylvester?
She should be here.
Yeah, I do see her in the people. Um, if they're mic. Okay, there we go.
All right.
Yes, I'm here.
Think I'm turning this over to Charlie then.
Okay, give me a sec to get everything kind of in place because I'm dealing with a PowerPoint and Teams. And I got a special treat for you folks that will either be a really special treat or a complete nightmare for everyone. So let's see if I can make this happen. So let me see if I can get where I need to be.
And then I would just like to state for the record, it looks like Jeff Pritchard did just join us.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Okay, let's go ahead and jump here. And let's see here. All right, hang on. All right. And let's see here. Give me one second, I'm almost there. Okay, I think I got it. How does that look to y'all?
Looks good.
Looks good.
Okay, so here's the treat, here's the good part of this, or like I said, the nightmare. So my name's Charlie Esparza, I'm with the Oregon Government Ethics Commission. And so today's training is going to be about public meetings law. And so we do have a few things I need to add to this training today that's unlike what we've done in the past. Is that this training is a required training for certain public officials. So I heard, I got in on the tail end of someone asking if this meets that requirement and that's going to be yes. So that's, here's the catch though, you have to stay all the way to the very end, okay? And on our end, because this changes things up for the way we do our presentations, what you're looking at in front of you should be a QR code that I'm going to have you folks scan that in. And we're going to do some polling questions during this presentation, okay? And the reason for that is just making sure that you folks are actually here and participating. And it's also a requirement from the legislature that we are quizzing you folks on this material. So it's got a two-way, one for you and one for us on our end. So let me know when everyone has jumped in, either give me a thumbs up or something. And once that works, I see that, awesome. And what I'll do is I'll click the next slide and that'll tell me how many people are active and are participating in this polling. Now just heads up, if the polling isn't working for you for some reason, if it's locking up or you're unable to get into it, don't worry about it. We'll keep moving forward because I found that if I spend too much time on tech stuff, the trainings go way over and I don't want to do that today. So how's everybody look? Is anyone having problems? How about that?
I selected B.
Okay, perfect, perfect. That's A or B, doesn't matter, there's no right or wrong. Oh, that's the other part of this. In the polling, there is no, there is no scoring, there's no grading. All the answers you'll give will be anonymous, so it won't be, it's not a pass/fail kind of presentation. I don't want y'all to think that. In fact, the idea here is when we start going to the poll questions, get them all wrong. And then that way, when we see them again, we'll get them all right and that will show that we actually learned stuff. All right, so I'm not hearing anything, so let's go ahead and jump through. And this will give me a number, y'all should see this pop up on the screen of how many people. I've got nine people participating. All right, so let's go ahead and jump into this. So I'll let you know when the polling questions are going to be coming up. So let's get into this. So again, my name's Charlie Esparza, I'm with the Oregon Government Ethics Commission. I am one of the trainers here at the Ethics Commission. I also have Ruth in the background, she's going to be jumping in later today. And I also have Casey Finstermaker, she's our compliance coordinator. And so she's kind of in the background to answer any tough questions. So today's training, the goal today is we're going to get an overview. Public meanings law, even though it's not new, the training is new. And so the laws are complex, so we won't be able to get into every single part of it. But I will hook you folks up to resources that'll help you get through it if you have questions after the fact. And yes, this is the part where I tell you, this meets the training requirement you do have to meet, stay all the way to the very end. So let's go ahead and jump into some polling. So the first one's going to be, again, no wrong or right answer, just answer what you think is the best for you. So first question here, how confident do you feel in your knowledge to follow public meanings law? A, very confident, B, confident, C, somewhat confident, D, not confident, but I know where I need to go when I have questions, or E, not confident at all. And I'll give you folks a sec to do that. Again, no grade. In fact, you know, the quicker you answer, the quicker we get through this presentation. How's that? All right, so on my end, I can see how many people are clicking in. So we're currently at eight folks. So waiting on number nine. And if number nine takes too long, I'll go ahead and jump again, so that we respect the time constraints we're under. All right, let's go ahead and jump to the next one. All right. So select the scenarios where public meanings law applies. So A, a meeting, a training on public meanings law. B, a group text message about the upcoming agenda item. C, an email about missing the next meeting, CC to everyone on the board. Or D, social media comments between board members about an upcoming budget approval. And you can choose more than one answer on this one. All right, the answers are coming in pretty quick. All right, so I know nine signed in, I'm going to say eight is our metric here. Because we're hitting that pretty quick. All right, let's go to the next one. Where can school district board meetings hold their meetings, or school districts' boards hold their meetings? A, within the school district, B, within the educational service district, or C, anywhere in the county? All right. Okay, so what accommodations are you required to give under public meanings law? A, meet in accessible location, B, provide interpreter if requested, no matter what, C, provide interpreter if requested within at least 48 hours, or D, nothing is required? I believe this is a multiple answer as well. Choose more than one. All right. Let's go ahead and keep rolling here. So let's see, next one. What are the written notice prerequisites for entering into executive session to evaluate the performance, discipline, or dismissal, or to hear complaints or charges? A, at least 24 hours in advance, B, identifies the public body, C, gives them the option to have an attorney present, D, tells them the reason for convening in executive session, E, provides how to request an open session, F, identifies the date, time, and location of the meeting, or G, sent by official mail. And this is another one of those where there's more than one correct answer. All right. All right, so true or false, a board can hold a budget meeting in private because it is causing a lot of controversy in the community. True or false? Yeah, yeah, we're fast on that one. So, all right. A grievance was submitted to your public body. What is the public body required to do? A, not required to do anything, B, respond within 21 days, or C, respond within 21 days and send a copy to the Ethics Commission?
It looks like Jeff Pritchard may have his hand up.
I do. Just curious to know a little bit more about the grievance. Was it the grievance about a public meeting, or was it just a grievance in general?
It's about a public meeting, sorry.
Okay, that's helpful, thank you.
Yeah. All right. All right, and what resources are available to analyze if a governing body follows provisions of public meanings law? So what resources are available? The Ethics Commission, the Attorney General's Manual on Public Meaning Law, Governing Bodies Council, your association, or E, none, you are on your own. And it's another multiple answer question, so you can choose more than one. All right, so this is one you type in on your phones, you can unmute. I don't have the chat visible to me on this end. When I pulled the screen up, it zeroed out my team's meeting, so I'm kind of in the blind here. But what does your governing body, why does your governing body hold meetings in public? Yeah, transparency, that's a great one. And that's a great answer because it's, we're going to see it on the next slide here. Transparency, I keep the public informed, making sure the public is aware of the decisions we make. Public input, yeah, accountability, great, yeah, those are all great answers. All right, so let's go ahead and roll into this. So public meetings law. So the idea here is the Oregon form of government is one that makes sure that the public is informed of the deliberations and the decisions are made in public meetings. So that means that all meetings are open to the public. Now, you can keep a meeting, have a closed meeting behind closed doors, but they do have to meet specific statutes that allow that. That's code for executive session, okay? And Ruth is going to jump in on that. But the idea here is public meanings law, make sure that we have a guideline to make sure that the decisions we make are done in a way that is open and transparent. So who is responsible? So when it comes to all public meetings laws and making sure that they're followed, it's always going to be the governing body members, okay? The governing body members are also individually responsible for making sure that it's followed. So you may have staff that may be in charge of contacting people and recording and making sure things are posted and noticed and making sure the accommodations are being met. But ultimately, it's the governing body members that are responsible, okay? So it's not going to be staff. And so just keep going on with this, not only are you responsible for your actions, you're also responsible for your non-action. So basically, that's just a way of saying that if you see something that's not correct, you need to speak up and make sure that it's corrected. And if you didn't know something was a violation, or you didn't notice what was going on, that doesn't mean you're not responsible, okay? And so to add to that, if there is a violation that's been found and a fine is issued, it's going to be issued to the responsible individual governing body members, okay? And just heads up, those fines cannot be paid for with public funds. All right, so that's why we're taking the training today, right? So we can avoid all that. So here's my first step in resources. We now have a section on our website with public meanings law. And so in there, we will be updating with new information and more resources as we roll through this. This is all, even though public meanings law is not new, this training and us being involved in it at this level is new. So we're having to step things up. So there's also additional trainings on our website. If you want to take this training again, we have it online as well. As we develop guides for public meanings law, they will be posted in the training section. And of course, you can always shoot us an email and ask us for advice. So when it comes to advice, there are different levels of advice. And each one of these gives you a different level of safe harbor if a complaint was made, okay? And so that was something that, that would be something that the investigator would look at. If a complaint was made, did you ask for advice and did you follow the advice? So when it comes to advice, you can shoot us an email, you can call us, you can come in person. Again, we're here to help you folks, make sure that these things keep you guys in the green, basically. And just heads up, if you do ask for advice, there is a number of us that respond to that advice. However, it does get overlooked by our compliance and enforcement coordinator, that's Casey, and our executive director, that's Susan. So they do put their eyes on and make sure that we're saying the right things. So what you're going to see in public meanings law, a lot of it is mirrored in the Oregon Administrative Rules. So anytime you see an OAR in there, that means that that's where we're pulling from because we've adopted these rules as well. So when it comes to public meanings law, that's going to be Division 50 in OAR 199. And in Division 40 is where you're going to find executive session. Now, something that we talk about a lot in executive session is the Attorney General's Public Records and Meetings Manual. This is available, is online, you can look at it, is a PDF, you can download it, you can print it out. Excuse me, it doesn't have just executive session, it has public meetings in general. Now here's the catch, it's from 2019, it has not been updated. So if you're wanting to know what the updates are, reach out to us, we'll help you with that. If you're not seeing it in there, that's another one of those that just stop for a moment and shoot us an email and say, hey, I'm not seeing this thing, I know it's the 2019, Charlie mentioned that there was 2023 stuff that's changed, help me out. So now we're getting into the heart of the presentation. I'm saying transportation for some reason, but, so we're going to get into definitions, we're going to get into location requirements, we're going to get into the noticing, we're going to get into accessibility of the meeting, telephone, electronic meetings, recording in minutes. And then I'm going to step out and Ruth is going to take over on the executive session part of things. She's going to talk about the grievance process, and that's the grievance process when it comes to public meanings law. Talk about enforcement and then the training requirements. So what, when do we need to hold a public meeting? So for you folks here, when we run through this definition, here's the catch. I want everyone to kind of get into your head that from here on out, when we say meeting, we're talking about the convening of a governing body, of a public body, which a quorum is required in order to make a decision or deliberate towards a decision. Okay, so that for us in this training is a meeting, okay? So if you're hanging out by the water cooler and you're trading jokes, that's not a meeting. A meeting is anytime, it's the convening of a governing body, of a public body, where quorum is present to make a decision or deliberate, or deliberate towards a decision. So as we go through, you can kind of see, you could accidentally find yourself in a meeting because you're going to be hitting all these points. And so the idea here is that if you are finding yourself in this situation, you need to stop what you're doing and get things back on track. So let's break this down a little bit further. So convening is basically the gathering of physical location, meeting through real time, through communication technology, a long-winded way of saying Zoom or Teams or whatever, meeting you do online. It can also be on the phone. Serial written communication, that's just emails and text messages. And then an intermediary to communicate. And I'll be honest with you, I've been struggling with that word intermediary, and I've been nailing it pretty good. And I'm hoping that me saying that right now doesn't mess it up for me later on. So public body, so I think we all know what a public body is. But again, we have to kind of break this down to define it. So a public body is going to be any state, any regional council, a county, a city, a special district, any municipal or public corporation, okay? So that's pretty simple. City of Salem is a public body. Oregon Government Ethics Commission, a public body. City of Portland, a public body. Hood River is a public body, okay? So when it comes to government bodies, if you're, sorry, public bodies, if you're wondering, are we a public body? Well, the way to double check that is, was your public body created pursuant to the state constitution, okay? Or was it a statute or some type of administrative rule that puts you into play, okay? So if you're wondering, then you may want to go back and talk to your counsel about, are we a public body? Does this apply to us? But I want to add something to this public body part, okay? So we already know what a public body is, but this also includes boards, departments, commissions, councils, bureaus, committees, subcommittees, or advisory groups, okay? So there's the public body. So let's go to the next step. Next one's going to be a governing body. So now we change things up a little bit. So a governing body basically means two or more members of a public body who have the authority to make decisions or recommendations to the public body on policy or administration. Okay, so I'll say that again, a governing body is two or more members of the public body who have the authority to make decisions or recommendations to the public body, okay? So this is going to change things up a little bit. We're getting a little bit tied in our definition. Let me add something though, a department that's headed by just a single public official is not a governing body, okay? So let's break down governing body a little bit further. So there's two types. So the first one's going to be a decision-making body. So a decision-making body makes decisions on policy or administration, okay? And they also have the power to exercise governmental power and act on behalf of the public body, okay? So when we talk about decision-making bodies, we're talking about city councils, we're talking about county commissions, we're talking about planning commissions, school boards, state boards and commissions. So we're talking about those folks. Those are decision-making bodies, meaning they're making decisions on policy and have the power to implement that on behalf of the public body. So next one's going to be an advisory body. So advisory body is a little bit different, okay? So governing bodies and public bodies need to be aware that when you're, anytime you, well, advisory bodies is one that makes recommendations. Let's get that out of the way. So an advisory body is one that makes recommendations on policy or administration. So governing bodies and public bodies need to be very careful when they form committees or subcommittees when their purpose is to provide recommendations to the governing body or to the public body, okay? So an advisory body is going to look like a budget committee, or an advisory committee, or an ad hoc committee, or a school district site council, okay? So just be aware, if you're creating an advisory body that's going to be making recommendations on policy, then you're creating an advisory body. And so this is going to apply to them as well. All right, so what's not a governing body? So if it's just a fat gathering group, meaning they just provide information, they do not make recommendations at all, they don't make any decisions, then that's not a governing body. And the other one's going to be advising individual public official. And so this is anytime there is an advisory group that's been assigned to a specific public official, or they've been appointed to the individual public official to make recommendations to only that public official, then that's not a governing body either, okay? All right, so we got public body out of the way, we got governing body out of the way, we got what's not a governing body. So let's talk about what a quorum is. So quorum is the minimum number of members of a governing body required to transact business or conduct business, okay? So the way this looks is, your governing body may have a policy in place that tells people, tells everyone what is that number that's required for quorum. So for us, the Ethics Commission, ours is five. So we have nine commissioners or nine slots for commissioners, but our quorum is five for us. So this is regardless of how many seats are vacant, or who's present at the meeting, it's still five. And if you don't have a policy in place that states what a minimum is, then it's basically a majority. So if you have a city with 10 members on its council, then the quorum would be six. All right, a decision. So this is, we all know what a decision is, but let's break this down a little bit. So a decision is anytime you take action on a matter, okay? So this means that when it comes time to make that decision, it's you taking that action. So it's a vote of the quorum to take an action on a, or to make a determination on a vote or final disposition. And then when it comes to what are they actually making that action towards, it's going to be towards a motion, an order, a proposal, measure, ordinance, or resolution. All right. So that's a decision. Then there's the decision-making process, which to me, I feel like these slides are a little bit out of, they should be flipped. So let's talk about decision-making process. It's pretty simple. Number one, identifying what type of decision you're going to need to make. Gathering information to help you make that decision. Identifying, assessing alternatives to that decision. Weighing and considering information towards that decision, and then finally, making the decision. And then the last part of this section is going to be to deliberate, let me back up, ah, to deliberate. And that just means you're going to stop and discuss that decision-making process. All right, so let's talk about serial communications. So serial communications is when a quorum of a governing body uses communications of any kind, okay? So this can be in-person conversations, it could be telephone, this could be video conferencing, can be written, using an intermediary. We're going to talk about that in the next couple of slides here, or just the conveying of information, okay? So the way this works is, you know, if you have a three-person commission and the three commissioners are at the water cooler and they're talking about an upcoming agenda, that would be an in-person or verbal serial communication, okay? If you post something on social media and one of the board members comments or gives it a thumbs up, that's another example of serial communication. Or another one would be, we kind of start getting into that line of intermediary where let's say councillor A runs into councillor B at the grocery store, they start talking about something, and then councillor B goes and talks to councillor C about it. And so that's where we start getting that intermediary part when conversations are being passed between different people. It's an intermediary? There it is, right there. I said it right so far. Hopefully I don't have to say it again, but I probably will. But an intermediary is when you, another person is being used to pass communication from one person to another, okay? So intermediary, see, I blew it. Intermediary can include a member of the governing body, can also include staff, okay? And so again, this goes back to if councillor A talks to councillor B, and then councillor B goes and talks to councillor C, and then councillor C talks to councillor D, and then you have a quorum. And so these are things you need to be aware of. All right, and so this next part is going to be quorum. I'm sorry, this next part, I'm looking at my cheater slide over here, but.
Charlie, it looks like Jeff might have a question for you. He's got his hands up.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, if you could go back one slide, just a couple of quick questions about the intermediary.
Yeah.
So if, if, say a staff sends an email out to, you know, the governing body,
Yeah.
not expecting a reply back, that's not, that's not a violation, correct? That's, that's just sharing of information. But what would be a violation is if staff shares something and then the, the, the governing body starts having communications amongst themselves about that.
Yeah.
That's when, that's when things get a little different. But if, if a governing body, members of a governing body want to call one of the other members of, of the governing body, and they have questions about stuff, that's not necessarily falling into the category of intermediary, that's just two board members having some questions trying to get information, correct? As long as there's no decision-making based on information that goes out, that is okay.
Yeah, you, you nailed it. You completely nailed it. The idea here is.
I have one other, one other question. Is, would it also be considered an intermediary if staff reaches out to each one of the governing body but doesn't share the results of a question that the governing body shares with the staff person? So let's say, you know, a staff member, you know, says, hey, I I don't know, there was an accident and I want to send flowers to so-and-so.
Okay.
And they individually call all the board members and say, would you have an issue if, you know, I sent flowers out to one of our staff members or, you know, another person related to our governing body? Is that considered intermediary? Because the staff member is asking a question, not necessarily in a quorum, but, and, and the, the governing body isn't deliberating, they're not actually meeting together, they're just, they're, they're, yeah, is, does that fall into the category of intermediary? And sorry for the challenging questions.
No, 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 it, it does. And the, the catch here is, yeah, you're, you're, you're communicating between each other and there's someone in the middle of all that. You, you, again, you nailed it because the idea here is you folks are just communicating. The, the thing you need to be aware of, and it sounds like you already are, is, is when everyone starts talking about agenda. Public. So hang on, I've got someone knocking on my door.
Okay.
Hang on one sec.
Looks like Casey has their hand up.
Okay, hang on. Casey, are you there? Uh, is Casey unmuted?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, great. I just wanted to, to chime in a little bit more on serial communications of what's prohibited. Because it really is about discussions regarding anything to do with what could come before the governing body, right? It's not just decisions. And so if, in the example that I think Jeff gave, if one person, one governing body member picks up the phone and talks to another governing body member, that alone may not constitute a serial communication that's prohibited. But it sets in motion what could ultimately result in a prohibited serial communication, because now there's a chain. And so if one of those two governing body members goes out and speaks to another governing body member without letting the other person know, now we've got, now we're like getting closer and closer to hitting that quorum and having the discussion result in an, you know, unintentional meeting. Right? And so you have to be really, really careful. And this goes to conferences and things like that. If you all are sitting together at a conference and you're listening to material that could involve a, that involves a policy or something that may come before that governing body for discussion or deliberation or anything else. If the people who are at that conference are sitting around at the lunch table talking to each other about that information, you may very well end up either inadvertently having a meeting there on the spot or starting what constitutes serial communications resulting in. If, so, you know, best practice is just not to talk to other governing body members about things that are going to come before the governing body unless you're in a public.
All right. Thank you, Casey. I, I, I needed that, actually. Cause I, I, you know, I'm knee-deep in all this. And so I'm kind of like, oh, that's right, it's a good point. So any questions so far on some, on any of this? Or I wrap up this, this part of the definitions? Okay, I'm not seeing none. So just remember, when we're talking about a meeting, we're talking about, and my, my slides change things up just a little bit here in this section, but basically we're talking about when a quorum of a governing body, of a public body convenes in order to make a decision or deliberate towards a matter on anything. And so this is a little bit what, what, what you were talking about early with, with the questions came across, which is basically if it's just informational or educational in nature, and there's not going to be any decision or deliberation made before it, then a public meetings law doesn't, doesn't fall into play here. So an example of this would be, say, if, like today, if we're just having a training today, there's not going to be a deliberation towards a decision or anything. And the training today is just informational. So that would not be, fall under public meetings law. If it's something that's completely unrelated to the governing body's deliberations or decisions. So let's just say, for example, you mentioned something earlier, let's just say a member of, a school board member mentions that they want to provide relief to folks that were in a natural disaster in another part of the state. Okay, and so the, the board member makes an appeal to the, the, the community to help them out and sets up a relief fund, then that would not be something that would be related to the governing body's deliberations or decisions. And of course, anything that's non-substantive in information. So this would be like, if y'all were having communications today about, you know, what, what you're having for lunch after today's meeting, then, then that would not be part of public meetings law. So let's go one step further. So what's also not a meeting? So if you're conducting an onsite inspection of any project or program, okay, so an example of this would be, let's just say you're a school board member and you, you visit an alternative high school. Okay, and you, you tour the facilities and you learn more about the programs. Okay? That would not fall into a meeting. But if they started to discuss, you know, the budget and what programs to add or which programs to cut, then you start going into what could constitute a meeting. And the next one's going to be an association gathering. So this is one where you, as a public official, attend a national or regional or state association, and members of the public body all belong to this organization. So this would be like the school board members attending an OSBA conference, or city councillors attending an Oregon cities conference. Okay? You can still attend and you can still make conversations, those wouldn't be meetings, but you just need to make sure that you don't talk about things that would come before the governing body. Okay? And so that's, that would also not be a meeting. So any questions for me so far? And I've, I've been able to fix my screen to see everyone. So any questions? All right, because the next, the next slide is a polling one. So did I tell you that the, when you signed in, you will receive a small electrical shock if you get the answer wrong? Did I relay that to y'all? All right, well, I'm kidding. We, nothing like that. All right, let's go ahead and take a look at this. All right, select the scenarios where public meanings law applies. It's simple. When does a public meaning law come into play? A, a training on public meanings law? B, a group text message about the upcoming agenda items? C, an email about missing the next meeting, CC to every board member? Or D, social, uh, social media comments between board members about a budget that is upcoming for approval? So again, I also get to see who's all responding. And guess what? We're going to get to see the answers on this one too. So let's see how we did. Not bad, not bad. Okay, so the first one, yeah, training, as long as you're in a training and it's just information and there's, there's not going to be decisions being made, then it doesn't count. So, but great job, 33 on, 33% on B and D. Yeah, those are your correct answers. You got it. You're talking about upcoming agenda items with everyone. Yeah, it's law kicks in at that point and then social media. Awesome. All right, so we're done with that part. Now we're going to get into the administrative part of this.
Hey Charlie.
Yeah.
Um, I saw that Bill had his hand up earlier, but then also I see Jim Knight also may have a question. Bill, did you, did you want to ask your question?
Yeah, my, my question was right before the, the survey just now. And it's kind of picky, but I was a school board member for like 11 years.
Okay.
And the, the catch is, you know, we go to OSBA conferences, for example, and a lot of stuff is, is changes in the law on policy and things like that. And so we're all sitting at the table and I say, this should be, this is very important. This should be an agenda item at one of our upcoming meetings. And that's all we say. And we all agree, this should be an agenda item. Did I just violate public meeting law?
Oh, that's a good question. I, I, Casey, can you help me out on this one? My, my knee-jerk response would be that, go ahead, Casey.
So I think it would, I think with most answers, it would depend, right? Um, I think it depends on who is in the room with you. Is it, is it?
Our entire board is at the conference, right?
Your entire board is at the conference and you're sitting there together and you say, this should be an agenda item.
Correct. Some, some big ORS changed by the legislator, it's being proposed, you need to change your policies, you know, by the, by the association. And the comment is, yes, this is important. We should do this as an agenda item. And that's all that's said.
I think arguably, that may be a violation, right? Context is really important. The specifics of the situation are really important. But if you are talking to the entire board outside of a public meeting about what should go on an agenda, that is arguably a violation. And so um, that's one of the reasons why one of our suggestions or best practices is that people don't really talk amongst themselves at conferences and things like that, and that about what is happening at the conference. Rather, they come back from the conference and they have a public meeting to discuss what went on and what they learned at the conference. Um, so that's one of the suggestions that we're making to folks who are kind of in these situations where they travel together as an entire group, and really run the risk of having a, an unnoticed public meeting.
All right, the hand, the hands are going up now. Uh, let's see, I don't know who had theirs up first.
Jim, Jim went up first. So Jim, do you want to go ahead?
Sure, it's, it's not related to the last comments or questions, but if we've sent out an announcement to the public that we're having this training today, and the public can attend this training, there's, they're not prohibited from it, doesn't this constitute then a public meeting?
So remember, when, when, when we're talking about a, a public meeting by the definition in the statutes, we're talking about a meeting and where members of the governing body of a public body are convening to make a decision or deliberate towards making decisions. So that's, that's the core of public meetings law. So yes, we are meeting now, but we are not convening to make a decision. So this part of it does not fall under public meetings law. Does that help?
Well, sort of, but it doesn't mean that we can talk about whatever we want to talk about, even though it's a training. I mean, something could come up within the training that we would have a question and we want to talk about, what do we want to do about this? Then it seems that's a little bit of a slippery slope.
You're, you're correct. You're correct. If, if we, if we just started talking about something and all the members here, uh, uh, we have a quorum here in the room and we start talking about an agenda item that's tied to this and how everyone's going to move forward on it, then yeah, we've totally slipped into uh, public meanings law. We've, we've, we've gone beyond information and we've gone towards making a decision. So yeah, you, you, you've got to keep things on track for sure.
All right, thanks.
Yep.
And then it looks like Jeff Pritchard was next.
Yeah, just a follow-up to what my colleague, Mr. Knight was, was asking about. So obviously, there's, for our agenda today, this is all training. It, it isn't necessarily a, a meeting in which we're going to be doing any deliberations, but we didn't notice it. So if all of us are going to a training and you notice the meeting as a public meeting, right? Because we're all going to be there. Would it be safe to say that you could pretty much talk about anything as long as no decisions are made, especially if you're away and, you know, the, the, I guess the, the, the general public doesn't have reasonable accommodation, right? So if we fly to San Diego to go to a conference and we notice that we're going to be, you know, three or four board members are going to be at this conference for three days, um, we're telling the public, hey, we're going to be together, uh, but for the agenda, you know, this is stuff that's at the conference. So that's still become a slippery slope. I guess that's, that's what I'm trying to wrap my head around. Because it's important for us to get together, to go to some of these trainings. And when I say get together, like one or two board members, but you know, one or two board members, obviously not a quorum, but, you know, people are going to talk, um, you know, about, about things that they're learning because, I mean, that's what we, that's what we do. So I, I'm just trying to understand this a little better.
So let's, let's, I, here, here's something that just popped into my head. So uh, think of it like this. Okay, let's just say after this, y'all are all going to have a training on Microsoft Word. Okay? I think y'all may be aware, right now we're having to convert all our documents to PDFs to make sure they're accessible. So let's just say after this, y'all did a training on converting Microsoft Word or documents to a PDF. So that would be a training, that would not be something that the public would, you wouldn't have to give notice for, because it was just informational uh, material. You're just talking about learning how to convert these documents to a PDF um, for accessibility. Okay, so, but again, so let's, you're, you've got the group there and suddenly you start talking about, oh, well, you know, I have to convert this agenda item to a PDF and this is one we're talking about right now. What do you guys think about it? And now you've slipped again back into uh, the, into the requirements of public meanings law. So like Casey said, you have to make sure that when you're, you're in, in a training or in something that's not a meeting, that you stick to uh, the meeting that, I, I'm jumping over my words here a little bit, but you, you stay away from agenda items or things that you may be discussing in something that would be a public meeting law. And so I got Casey waving her hand over there.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to add that to Jeff's specific question. You wouldn't, unless the conference was within your jurisdiction and open to the general public, it wouldn't be a public meeting, right? Because the public couldn't attend. And so that's why noticing the conference and suggesting that that's a public meeting, and doing all the things that you normally do at a public meeting wouldn't work because the public wouldn't be able to actually attend. So I just wanted to clarify that for you.
No, very helpful. Thank you.
Sure.
All right, we got another question.
So I might be the only one left with my hand up. Take it back to probably Bill's comment about attending a, say, a conference together as a board. Let me pose this scenario, because you are, you pretty much already said that one scenario of this. We all, as the board, take a tour of one of our airports for visiting a construction site or visiting a project or visiting a whatever. visiting a construction site or visiting a project or visiting a whatever. And then somebody says, this should be an agenda item. Now legally, we're allowed to take the site and do that fact finding. But to say, now we want to have more information and put this on the future agenda, we've now crossed the line.
Uh, well, Casey, I would, I would go back to the, that's a tough one. That's a good question. Casey.
There's a carve out, there's a carve out for taking tours. So I can take a tour, but not say anything?
Yeah. Let's see, Casey.
So if you're taking a tour and you're gathering information, that's one thing, right?
Mm-hmm.
But once you start.
And we gathered information, we said, we'd like an update on this, or we'd like continued information or bring us more information at a later time.
So, okay, to, to go back, cause the first one was you said you wanted to add it as an agenda item, right? And so if you, if you're talking about wanting to make this something, you're talking about wanting to bring this before the governing body in some aspect, you're going to want to talk about that at a public meeting. If you were just out there.
Tour. We're taking the tour, say it's a construction project that's not going well or something. So we take a tour to see how it's going. And then we say, we'd like regular updates on this at future, at future meetings.
You are saying that to?
While we're on the tour, we recognize how things are going on. We're on the tour, we recognize how things are going on, say at a construction project and we say, this is concerning. We'd like regular updates at our public meetings for the next year or something to that effect. I don't know.
I don't know if this helps or just makes it more confusing, but I mean, this, to Steve's question, does it matter if that statement or question, that statement is said to other board members or if it's just said to an ODAF staff member? Does that change anything?
So if it's set in front of the whole board, right? That may, that may implicate, um, that may be improper, right? Now, the way I look at it is just that you are asking for more information, right? Not necessarily that you are deliberating or making a decision as part of this fact gathering mission, you're asking for more information. And so it really depends on what you say and how you say it and who you're saying it in front of, right? Um, all of those things are going to be really important. If we get a complaint and we're looking at how the law may or may not have been violated, right? And so if you are just asking a question to gain more information that doesn't really go toward policy or deliberations or decision-making, that's one thing. If you are asking questions that go toward how you intend or the deliberation or the decision-making process, that's another thing. So that type of question that you're talking about is kind of on the line, right? Because on the one hand, you're asking for more information. On the other hand, if you are saying, we want to get this on the agenda and we want you to show up every week, that may be, or every month, or whatever the case may be, that may be pushing it to showing that you want to deliberate on this and you want to, to do these types of things, right? So what may be a better option is that you communicate to staff that you want updates from these folks and they coordinate it or something like that, like once you get done with the tour. Right? Because nothing says you have to say this while you are on the tour. It could arguably wait until you're, you're back.
Well, I would say using Steve's example of, of that scenario, if the scenario was, hey, I think we should have this on an agenda. Or I say, we should have this on the agenda. I'm not asking anybody to agree. I'm just making a statement. That doesn't seem to, that doesn't seem to cross the line. It's, I'm just speaking out loud that I have an idea. We should have this on our agenda. And we drop it. We don't, we don't say, what, didn't follow up and say, what do you guys think? Is this a good idea? That steps over the line at that point.
So I, I think it goes to the fact that at that point, then you have decided that you want to discuss and deliberate this more, right? And so that's why I would kind of advise against not talking about it while you are there. Um, and risk having a public meeting.
Somewhere there should be a free, a, a balance of exchange of concepts or ideas without taking it to the level of I, I, I'm promoting an action or a future vote. I'm just saying, hey, this is a really good idea. We should talk about this at some point as, as a group and, and not have a discussion at that point. Just say, this is going to happen to us a lot. I think we go to conferences or we go someplace and we're going to see issues that probably would need to be addressed. That's kind of how agendas begin to be developed. If somebody sees something that needs to be addressed, but in the issue that we're in a conference together, hey, this is a good idea. I think we should, we should talk about this as a group. That's, I, I, I'd hate to think that we could be that strict that we couldn't voice that opinion unless you're telling, unless you're saying that that was, that's too dangerous. That's, you know, I'd like to hear that clarity that yes, don't do that. Don't even mention there's something to talk about in the future. You talk about sports, but don't talk about anything that we're at the conference for that we think could be educational or beneficial to the state. There's, there's got to be, at some point, there's, logic should step in or common sense should step in.
No, I completely understand how frustrating it can be, right? Because this, there are lots of situations that, and especially because this hasn't been enforced for how many years, right? And so people have a way of doing things. And the idea of having to go to a spot where you're not communicating amongst each other in the ways that you have been in the past is really, really challenging. And so I am, I definitely understand like that level of frustration, but let me confirm. Okay. Whether or not we think some kind of comment about adding something to an agenda would cross the line. Um, because I don't know that we've had that specific of a question, but we can get back to you and let you know. Okay?
Yes. So, uh, I'll give you, cause, and I think this is, uh, important for the distinction, because there is supposedly a carve out for tours and for fact finding. So, so the example like I gave is, uh, and I can think of this from the past, uh, the entire board takes a tour of an airport at, you know, the state brings us out to one of the state airports and says, we're going to have us an aviation board meeting at a state airport in order to do that. And as part of that aviation board meeting, we take a tour of business X, Y, or Z, or training opportunity, or education opportunity. Uh, say example for a pilot, you know, for education opportunity for aviation, some uh, local curriculum. And we all say, while we're taking the tour, hey, this is great. Let's put, let's put aviation education, uh, as a future and, uh, uh, agenda item for this, uh, for the board to talk about how we can get involved in aviation education. We're doing fact finding as part of the overall agenda of that meeting. Yet we can't say, until we, we, three months later, let's have an agenda item about this. I, I, I feel like Jim, that that seems a little incongruous for the reason for having the carve out for doing tours and being able to do fact finding.
Yeah, let me, let me just jump in real quick. Um, cause these are really, really great questions. And like Casey said, we'll follow up with you folks on these. Uh, I'd, I'd love to have a back and forth all day, uh, with everyone talking to Casey and me somewhere else. Uh, but, but, uh, uh, I do have to get through this training. So, uh, we have more, more, quite a bit more to go through. So uh, I apologize for cutting these short, but in, 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 in respect for everyone's time, I have to keep rolling. All right. So let's go ahead and, and keep going. So we've, we've made, uh, we've decided that uh, we've now have a public meeting. We, we need to make sure we go through the administrative provisions. And basically, what I'm talking about when it comes to the administrative provisions, we're talking about where are we going to meet? What's the location? What are the requirements for noticing, uh, this public meeting? Uh, making sure there's accessibility, uh, for folks that want to attend the meeting. And that accessibility extends to telephone, electronic meetings as well. And then also the recording of the minutes. And then, uh, like I said earlier, Ruth will take you through executive session and talk about the grievance process, process at the very end. So, and, and just a reminder that it is the governing body's members' responsibility to make sure that, that these are followed. Okay. So let's talk about the first one. So the meeting location, so the meeting location requirements is basically this. Yeah. The meeting has to be held within, uh, the geographical boundaries of that public body. Okay? Or it can be at the main office. Okay? Or the nearest location. Okay. Now, if you're, uh, if your city, county, state, or your special district falls within lands that is owned by a recognized Oregon tribe, then you can have that, uh, meeting on their territory, territory, as long as it's within the geographical boundaries of the state. Okay. So to expand on that, if you're a state agency, a state board or a state commission, then the boundaries are going to be the entire state. Okay. So for other public bodies, it's going to be, um, uh, where their jurisdiction is within the state. And so if you're unsure, then that's where you reach back out to staff or charter or your legal counsel to find out where the boundaries are. Basically, we saw an example earlier and one of the questions, if, if you're a school district, if you're a school, where do you have your public meeting? Uh, you would obviously have it within the school district. So, um, so where public meetings cannot be held. Okay. So this is, it sounds kind of crazy, but this is, once you hear what's behind it, it's, it's going to be obvious. You cannot hold a meeting where, uh, where folks are discriminated against. Okay. And that's race, color, creed, sex, uh, sexual orientation, gender identity, national origin, age or disability. Okay? And so I know that sounds pretty simple, like, okay, well, where, where do those places exist? But you have to think about those places that, that only allow men or only allow women to participate. Okay. An organization or an organization where only seniors are allowed or only youth are allowed. Or if it's an organization that only allows people of a certain race or ethnicity, ethnicity. So that's, we kind of need to be careful about those things. Now, what if you're holding a public meeting and there's multiple jurisdictions that are involved? Okay. So at this point, uh, you can choose one of the jurisdictions to have it at, or it could be at the nearest practical location. Okay. So we've got that. So let's just kick this up a notch. What if it's an emergency? Okay? And so, uh, this means that, uh, if you have an emergency and this means it needs immediate action, you can, you can hold a meeting at other locations other than the ones we talked about. Okay? So what are we talking about? Here we're talking about a fire, a flood or other type of weather event that you can't hold at any other locations. At that point you can, you can go beyond that. So we talked about training sessions. Okay. So training sessions uh, can be held outside the jurisdiction. Just keep in mind, again, we going back to as long as during that training, there's no deliberations toward a decision that are being made. Okay? And so, uh, uh, training like this session here, we're doing it online. Training sessions can be held anywhere. Where, we do trainings all the time and we're finding that uh, we're doing trainings with multiple jurisdictions in different parts of the state, and we're usually picking one spot that everyone can go to. All right. Any questions on meeting locations? So poll questions next. All right. I gave you a freebie on this one. Here we go. Where can a school district board hold their meetings? A, within the school district, B, within the educational service district, or C, anywhere in the county? All right. I've got six responses so far. All right. Well, in, in the sake of keeping this on track, let's go ahead and jump forward and see how we did. All right. A, it was A, within the school district is the correct answer. All right. So good job. So let's take a look at noticing. All right. So again, governing body members are responsible, make sure the, make sure that the noticing is done correctly, regardless of who does it. So we found that smaller public bodies, usually the governing body members take care of that. But in bigger jurisdictions, uh, it may be staff. So when it comes to noticing a public meeting, number one, the public must be aware of the public meeting. So giving notice to the general public, interested parties and also, uh, members of the media. Okay? So here's the catch on this one. It must be given at least 48 hours of notice. Okay. This is for your standard meeting. So where do you post this? It depends on your public body, but, uh, it can be on a public body's website. It can be on a newspaper. It can be on the Oregon transparency website. It can be on a community bulletin board, social media. It can be email. If you have a, an email list of folks that are, um, that attend these meetings. Um, and you can also send it out by mail. All right. So what do you put on the notice? So you have to give the time of the meeting, the location, the subject of discussion, and then information to request an interpreter. So let's take a look at what this looks like. I'm going to throw an example of what our meetings look like. So when we throw out our agenda, uh, we post it on our website. Uh, we posted on the Oregon transparency website as well. And in our meeting materials, this is what you see. This is what you get. So it gives you the date, the time, uh, location, uh, the telephone, the conference ID number, because we typically do ours, uh, in person and available on Teams. We give you the link to that. And of course, if you need, uh, if you have some accessibility issues or need some accommodations, you can shoot us an email or give us a phone call and we'll work through you with that. All right. So let's go one step further. So that's your standard meeting. All right. So this is a special meeting. Okay. So no special meeting can be held without giving at least 24 hours notice. Okay? And so this notice goes out to the governing body members, the news media and the general public. Okay. In the same, same way you posted earlier, your website, community board. This is a special meeting. All right. Let's go one step further. An emergency meeting. All right. So this is one that you can give with less than 24 hours. Okay. But you still have to give it, give notice as soon as possible with as much time as possible. Again, uh, you notify the public, you note, you contact interested people and then the media as well. You need to post it in the usual locations that you've had in the past. And in the minutes, you need to describe what caused you to have this emergency meeting. Okay. That has to be stated in that. All right. Any questions on noticing? All right. So let's go to meeting accommodations. All right. So it is, uh, it is considered discrimination if you're discriminating against folks with a disability. Okay. So that just means that anywhere you meet, it must be accessible to persons with disabilities. Okay. So there is more information that can be found on the American Disabilities Act. Uh, you can find that on ADA.gov.gov. But when it comes to, uh, uh, making sure that the meetings are accessible, you have to make sure that, uh, you provide a good faith effort to have an interpreter for those folks that uh, have a, uh, have, are deaf or having a hearing disability. Okay? And so what do you do if they request an interpreter? Okay. So remember we said earlier that you have to give 48 hours notice for a public meeting. Uh, this allows folks that need to, need to have an interpreter 48 hours to make that request. Okay? Of course, uh, you want to give them as much time as possible. And so, uh, in that request, we saw it earlier on our, on our example that you have to give, uh, the person that, that responds to this request needs to give the name of the person. They're making that request, the language preference. Now this doesn't apply to, uh, emergency meetings. Okay? So we, and I kind of briefly tapped on it, but I said, you know, making a good faith effort. Okay. So that means that you're, you're making an effort to contact these folks. And so here's my, another cheat for you folks is, is, you know, to make those accommodations. And so here's my, another cheat for you folks is, is, you know, to make those accommodations, the state of Oregon, Human Services does have a website that will allow you to contact those folks to, to, to make an effort to get an interpreter for those folks. All right, any questions on meeting accommodations? All right, because I got a question for you. All right, so what accommodations are you required to give under Public Meetings Law? And this is a multiple answer question. So meet in accessible location, B, provide an interpreter requested, no matter what, C, provide interpreter if requested within at least 48 hours, or D, nothing is required. All right. That's how we did. Yeah, you got it, you nailed it. So yeah, meet in accessible location, provide an interpreter within at least 48 hours. Awesome. All right, so during the meeting, so let's talk about, you've done everything you need to do, now you're in the meeting. Okay, you want to make sure that, number one, that the meeting is open to the public. Okay, and that all people are permitted to attend, unless there's a statute in ORIS that allows media to not be included. Okay, and we'll talk a little bit about that when we start getting into executive session. Okay, and so again, this is where a quorum, folks are meeting to make a decision or deliberation. Remember, you may not meet in private to ever make a final decision, or deliberate towards a decision in private. You can go into executive session to talk about things, but that final decision needs to be done in open session.
Hey Charlie, it looked like Bill had a quick question. Bill, did you want to ask a question? You had your hand raised.
Does making, does making your, your meeting online available consider all people are permitted to attend, including disability?
Yes, yeah, you got, you're, you're reading my mind, or you're reading the future pages of my presentation right now. So let's go ahead and jump into this. So here we go. So public meeting law still applies to electronic or telephone meetings, as we start getting into Zoom and, and Teams and those types. Okay, so you want to make sure that if the meeting is held electronically or by telephone, you must provide the public access to where they can either listen to the, listen to the meeting at the time it occurs, or they can meet virtually, you'll still need to provide the public with access to the meeting. Okay, and so this can be done by giving them the place available where they can go and listen to the meeting at the time it occurs, or providing call-in numbers, or links to the video feed. Ah, and if you're allowing folks to submit testimony, then they are allowed to submit testimony either through the phone, or through, through communication on, on the electronic meeting. And of course, media access has to be provided, all this as well. So let's talk about media. This is another one that comes up quite a bit. So the first things first, you're not going to like this one, get ready. The Oregon Government Ethics Commission cannot define who media is. Okay, the Attorney General has put an opinion out on who qualifies for media, but ultimately, it's going to be the public body to adapt an application or procedures for individuals to be recognized as media. Okay, so here's the catch on this. You can adopt those procedures, just keep in mind, if a complaint is filed, the Ethics Commission will look into seeing if the governing body made their decisions that follow the Attorney General's opinion. So media is, is one that's come up quite a bit. I, I'll tell you this, another, another cheat or a hack for you folks, contact us, we can help guide you through that. I think we, we've come here and, at the Ethics Commission, you know, media was one thing at one time, but things have changed now. And so it, and it makes it difficult. All right, so when it comes to public meetings law, the public meetings law only requires the public to access the meetings. Okay, it does not require them to, to give comment or testimony. Okay, so public meetings law just allows them to participate in the meeting, but not to give a comment or testify at the meetings. Now, if you are going to allow comments, or let folks to, or let folks to add testimony, that's going to be your public body's choice to do that. You just want to make sure that you have some procedures in place for handling that. Okay, and of course, it is the governing body's responsibility to make sure that there is decorum that is maintained during that meeting. All right, another hot topic with public meetings law is voting. All right, so all voting must be done by public vote. No secret ballots are allowed. The results of all the votes must be recorded for vote of each individual governing body member by name. Okay, written ballots must include the name and the results announced. Okay, so we get a lot of questions on this, and so I'll, I'll answer a couple that are, that are already in my slide here. Can a governing body vote by email? No. Okay, are electronic votes allowed? It depends, as long as those votes are visible to everyone in the room, both physically and virtually. Okay, now here's the big one, save it for last. For something like the consent agenda, or something where all governing body members say yea or nay, does this work? Or does it need to be a roll call vote? Our answer to that is, a roll call vote is best. Okay, if not a roll call, then immediately after the vote, the chair should identify who voted and how. All right, any questions on that part? Okay, all right, let's jump into recordings. So when it comes to recordings, public meetings law does have a criteria that's required, how recordings are, how the meetings are being recorded, and how those recordings are made available. Okay, again, governing body members are responsible for making sure this is done properly. So you can do this in a number of ways. Okay, so you can record them by sound, you can record them by video, digital recording, or you can have written minutes. Okay, when it comes to, you do not have to have full transcripts, but when it comes to the written minutes, they must give a true reflection of the matters that were discussed during the meeting. Okay, and the views of their, of the, everyone participating. Okay, so want to add to this, all minutes and recordings shall, shall be available to the public within a reasonable amount of time after the meeting. Okay, so minutes should include the members that are present, any motions, proposals, resolutions, orders, ordinance, measures, and the results, the results of all the votes, the vote of each member by name, a substance of any discussion, and reference to any document discussed. All right, so the next one's going to be when it comes to school boards. So this is, doesn't apply to you folks, but things have changed for those folks that are on school boards. And basically, starting in 2025, school boards will need to, and this is required for Common Union High Schools, Education Service Districts, Community College Districts, and Public Universities, they have to make video recordings of all its meetings, and it has to be posted within seven days, either on a website or on a social media site. Okay, now if they don't have the broadband to do video, then they can, they can do audio. Again, it still has to be posted publicly, either on the website or a social media site. Okay? All right, so state agencies with their video recordings, they can record electronic meetings. This can be done on telephone or other electronic means to record the meeting. It must be published, published on publicly accessible website or hosting service, and so the public can access it without charge. So when we start getting into that, we're talking about, it can be on your website, it can be on your social media site, or it could be on something like YouTube. Okay, now just heads up, this doesn't apply to executive session. So we know with executive session, that's when we're allowed to close doors. Okay, so my part of this training, we've talked about the definitions, we've talked about a location requirements, the noticing requirements, accessibility requirements, the telephone and electronic meetings, what that's all about, and the recorded meetings. The next section we're going to get into is going to be executive session, the grievance process enforcement and training requirement. So we're going to take a little five-minute break, just so that me and, me and Ruth can switch spots here, and she's going to take you through the rest of the training, so just hang tight, give us a minute.
All right, so my monitor is showing we're at 11:25. Should we wait for Alexis to get back, or is everybody ready to get started? Okay, looks like we're ready to go, and can, can folks hear me? Excellent, wonderful. All right, so as we get started with the rest of our presentation today, before we dive into the rest of the remaining topics, Casey, my understanding is that you had a little clarification on something from earlier that you wanted to share?
Sure, so we checked with the executive director specifically on the question about whether you could say you wanted to talk about something at the next meeting? That is probably okay. If you say any more than that, it is likely a violation. So there can't be any context to it. None of that, right? It just has to be very specific to talking about it at the next meeting.
Thank you. All right, so, once again, the rest of the topics that we're going to talk about today, we're going to talk about executive session provisions of public meetings law, we're going to talk about the grievance process, and we're going to talk about enforcement of the provisions of public meetings law, and we're going to address that training requirement, which is, as we know, that's what we're here for today. So executive sessions, definitions, an executive session is any meeting or part of a meeting of a governing body, which is closed to certain persons for deliberation on specific matters. Now, a governing body may hold a meeting that consists of only an executive session, and the notice requirements are the same as those for any other public meeting. Now, again, we have this prohibition on final decisions, and that prohibition means that no executive session may be held for the purpose of taking any final action or making any final decision, unless an exception in the statute applies. Now, can a governing body discuss how they're going to vote in executive session? Well, so it is likely that the governing body may reach a consensus in an executive session, and so its members will know what that consensus is in executive session. But the purpose of that final decision requirement is to ensure that the public is aware of the results of discussions. So a formal vote in open session satisfies that requirement, even if the public vote merely confirms the consensus that is reached in an executive session. Now, in order to go into executive session, you need to follow a series of steps, and we've adapted the executive session checklist that is present in the Attorney General's Meetings Manual. So again, that Meetings Manual, super great resource. These are the steps that you need to take for an executive session. So before the meeting, before holding any executive session, that meeting must be noticed in the same manner that you would provide notice of a public meeting, and you need to be sure that the notice cites the specific statutory provisions for entering into executive session. And each board member should be provided with a copy of the notice, so that they can independently, individually verify that the executive session has been cited properly, and that the provisions are followed once the meeting is held. A governing body can enter executive session that is part of a regular or special or emergency public meeting, or they can do a standalone executive session. So let's take a look at what the checklist will be like if the executive session is part of a regular public meeting. So during the public meeting, if any governing body members have a conflict of interest on an agenda item that is to be discussed in executive session, they need to announce that conflict of interest during their public meeting. Officer needs an announcement in public that the governing body is having an executive session. The announcement needs to cite the specific reasons and statutes for entering into executive session for each subject to be discussed. And if you intend on coming out of executive session to take action or vote, you need to announce when the open session will begin again. And you need to specify if any individuals may attend the executive session, and instruct the media and any additional specified attendees what may not be disclosed from the executive session. Now, if this is not specified, the media may report everything. And if you happen to discuss matters other than what you have cited, the media may report those additional items. So please keep in mind, there are times when news media may be excluded from attending an executive session, and we'll discuss those situations later. But during the executive session, you need to make sure that the conversation is limited to only the topics that were cited as the reason for the executive session, and no final decision can be made in executive session. You need to come back into open session to take any final action. If you did not specify at the time you went into executive session when you would reconvene that open session, you may open the door and announce you're back in open session, if it was a quick thing, right? But if you did specify and announce a time where you would reconvene the open session, and you come out of executive session early, then you need to wait before you convene open session to allow the public and interested parties to attend. So if you come back into open session unexpectedly, after you previously announced you would not reconvene into open session, you may be required to postpone that final action until another properly noticed meeting. Now, after the meeting, we also have a part of the checklist. Now, after the meeting, we also have a part of the checklist, and that is to keep records, to keep minutes or a sound video or digital recording of all executive sessions. Now, when the presiding officer is gonna make that announcement in public session about going into executive session, we've got a resource for that, and again, this comes from the Attorney General's Public Meetings Manual. So this example script is used in convening an executive session during a public meeting, and the first paragraph of this notice states the governing body's entry into executive session. It cites the statutes for going into executive session during this meeting. So, don't list all the provisions, only the ones that apply to your meeting. Then, the second paragraph addresses the attendees, the news media, and the designated persons, as well as persons who should leave the room. And paragraph three provides guidance as to what not to report on, and paragraph four acknowledges that no final decision will be made in executive session. Lastly, the notice states that the meeting will return to open session, and which the audience is welcome to rejoin upon completion of that executive session. Alright, so, if we have, it looks like we have a question about, about the opening of executive sessions, Bill?
Yeah, so just on your one procedure, so just how to do a specific, so for instance, I was on the school board. Sometimes, when we're going into executive session and it's noticed properly, I won't actually know some of the details about what's being discussed in the executive session until I'm in it, and find out that I have a conflict of interest. So how do you handle that?
Uh, thank you for bringing that up. That gives us a good cue to what we're gonna talk about when we talk about declaring your conflict of interest. And I'm gonna address that a little bit further on in the slides. We're gonna talk about what are the courses of action for governing body members as they're fulfilling their responsibilities in executive session, that's how we're gonna talk about it, thank you. So, executive sessions can only be held when they're permitted to be held by a specific provision of the law. And for the most part, executive session, whoops, okay. For the most part, executive session provisions in ORS 192.660 are optional. So that means the governing body isn't required to hold an executive session to discuss the topics. Most of the stuff that is covered in executive session provisions, you could still have a public meeting about that, but there is an exception, and that exception is when there are other laws such as FERPA or HIPAA regulations, or specific federal or state laws that may require confidentiality. So, some of the executive session provisions have prerequisites and other requirements, so for those provisions, each prerequisite and requirement of the provisions must be met before an executive session may be convened. And the topics that are discussed in an executive session must be limited to those topics that are expressly permitted by the specific provisions under which the executive session was convened. So, we're gonna take a look at some of those relevant permissible reasons for convening an executive session. So, we have a handout that breaks down the executive session provisions and the prerequisites to the provisions, and we organize them in the categories of confidential records litigation, hiring and employment, negotiations, security and safety, and the provisions that are used less frequently. So, this reference takes you through, uh, what the prerequisites are for each of the provisions. It's available on our website, and we're just gonna send a link to everyone who has attended this session as well for this handout. So, let's talk a little bit about the provisions about records. So, a governing body can hold an executive session to review information or records that are exempt by law from public inspection. Now, to enter executive session under this provision, the information or records must be expressly exempt by law, so that includes federal and state statutes on confidentiality. Information and records that are exempted are listed in public records law in ORS 192.345 and 192.355. Now, the Oregon Government Ethics Commission doesn't have jurisdiction over public records law, so I can't answer questions about public records law. But, an example of a record that could be reviewed under this provision is to review attorney-client privileged documents. So, someone could use this provision to meet with their attorney in executive session, but there needs to be a written record such as a legal memorandum. And this is two sub little F. Now, two sub little H is the provision that allows a governing body to enter executive session to consult with their counsel so long as the attorney is included in the meeting, either in person or by telephone or electronic means. And this provision allows the governing body to discuss with counsel their legal rights and duties with regard to current litigation or litigation that's likely to be filed. But this exemption does not apply to litigation that has been concluded. And the Attorney General recommends that public bodies invoke this exemption, two sub little H, only on the advice of their legal counsel, because the purpose of this exemption is to place governmental bodies, who are parties or potential parties to litigation, on an even footing with private parties. And this means that the governing body should be able to engage in a private and candid discussion with counsel about the legal issues raised by the litigation. The discussions can include procedural options, as well as substantive analysis of the legal merits and the risks and ramifications of the litigation. But no final decisions can be made in executive session. They must be made in an open session. And media is permitted to attend these sessions. The only time the media can be excluded is if they are party to the litigation being discussed, or if they are an employee, agent, or contractor of the news media organization that is a party to the litigation. So we've talked about confidential records and litigation. We're going on to talk about hiring and employment provisions. So, regarding the employment of public officers, employees, and agents, this is seven sub little A. This one's got prerequisites, so before a governing body can meet in executive session to discuss the employment of a public officer, employee, or agent, they need to take steps, they need to make sure that the vacancy for the provision has been advertised, and that regular hiring procedures have been adopted. And if the employment is for a public officer, the governing body needs to provide the public with an opportunity to comment on the filling of that public officer's position. So that doesn't require the public be given an opportunity to comment on named candidates for the position before the executive session is held. But, public body, the governing body needs to provide the public with an opportunity to comment on the position being filled. So for chief executive officers, there's more prerequisites. The governing body needs to have adopted hiring standards, criteria, their position description, and policy directives, the agency and policy goals for this position, and they need to have adopted those at a public meeting where the public has had a chance to comment. Now, in this provision, the body cannot use this provision to discuss the filling of an elected position when it becomes empty. They cannot discuss filling a vacancy on any public committee, or commission, or other advisory group. They can't discuss general employment policies, and they can't discuss the officer's salary. And also, they can't make that final decision about a candidate in executive session. Governing body must return to public meeting before taking a final action. Now, there is a provision two sub little B, where a governing body can hold an executive session to consider the dismissal or disciplining of a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual agent, and may hear complaints or charges brought against such persons. So, the governing body is required to provide a written notice to the affected individual within 24 hours before the executive session, and they can request an open hearing. Now, an open hearing in this context means an open session. And we'll talk more about what needs to be included in that written notice in a minute. But, there is another provision that has this same requirement, and about letting the person know. And that is performance evaluations, which is two sub little I, because a governing body may convene an executive session to review and evaluate the job performance of a chief executive officer, other officers, employees, and staff. But just like with the discipline and dismissal provision, this only applies if the individual whose performance is being reviewed and evaluated does not request an open hearing. So what needs to be in that written notice that is provided to the person? So, in order to provide that affected individual with a meaningful opportunity to request an open hearing, the governing body is required to provide them with a written notice of the executive session before the meeting. And the written notice must be provided at least 24 hours or one business day in advance, and it needs to include the name of the governing body where the matter will be considered. They need to include the time, date, and location of the meeting. They need to include the purpose for which the governing body proposes to convene the executive session, and they need to show how that official may request an open hearing. So the provision requires an open hearing if the person involved requests an open hearing. But we don't concede this provision to require an adversarial hearing, only an open session. So, the affected person needs not be present for this session, and they have no right to postpone the hearing to permit an attorney to attend or to have a formal hearing, unless another law, contract, or collective bargaining agreement provides those rights. Now, public meetings law makes it very clear that in these hiring and employment provisions, little A, little B, little I, you cannot use those provisions to conduct a general evaluation of agency goals or objectives or operations, or of any directive to personnel concerning agency goals, objectives, operations, and programs. And you can't discuss compensation, can't discuss salaries and benefits, can't negotiate salaries and benefits in an executive session. And so, for example, if a city is interviewing candidates for the position of a city manager in an executive session that is held under two sub little A, and the governing body wishes to discuss non-salary compensation with candidates, including their access to city vehicles, their membership in a professional organization, that's not a topic that's permitted in executive session. Alright, so we've talked about the hiring and employment provisions, and we have four provisions that are related to negotiations, labor negotiations and real property transactions, and trade and commerce negotiations. So, the provision two sub little D, where a governing body may hold an executive session to confer with their labor negotiator, to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to carry on labor negotiations. And, this subsection allows a governing body to request that members of the media leave. Now, there is an additional exception involving labor negotiations, and that is 192.660 sub three, and it states that labor consultations are to be conducted in an open meeting unless negotiators for both parties, the governing body and the employees, request that negotiations be conducted in executive session. Also, labor negotiations that are held in executive session under this provision are not subject to the notification requirements that are listed in public meetings law in 192.640. So, a governing body may convene an executive session to discuss the negotiation of real property transactions with individuals the governing body has designated for the purposes of negotiating real property transactions. And this is in two sub little E. And this provision does allow the governing body to discuss the negotiations with the person they have designated to conduct those actual negotiations. Now, real property transactions are not limited to the purchase or sale of real property, so negotiations for a long-term lease transaction undoubtedly would be included within this provision. But, this provision does not include discussing a public body's long-term space needs and discussing any general policies concerning lease sites. So the executive session needs to be limited to discussions of negotiations regarding specific real property. And again, while the board can come to a consensus about whether to accept an offer, they need to conduct a vote in a public meeting to take that official action of accepting the offer. So, trade negotiations, that's two sub little G, and this provision allows the preliminary negotiations involving matters of trade or commerce to be conducted in executive session when the governing body is competing with governing bodies in other states or nations. And this provision is permissible to use when the governing body knows or has good reason to believe that it's in competition with other governing bodies or nations regarding the matter to be discussed. But this provision does not apply when the governing body is in competition with other governing bodies in Oregon. Alright, so we've covered confidential records and litigation, we've talked about hiring and employment, we've talked about negotiations, and next we've got security and safety. And that includes some new provisions from 2023. So, school safety plan, that's two sub little K. This is to consider matters relating to school safety, or a plan that responds to safety threats made toward a school. Cybersecurity, this is new in 2023, and this is two sub little P, to consider matters relating to cybersecurity infrastructure and responses to cybersecurity threats. And, the public body's security, this is two sub little O, and this is new in 2023 as well. And this is to consider matters relating to the safety of the governing body and the security of public body facilities and meeting spaces. And it's limited to discussions of the safety of the governing body and its staff and volunteers, and to the security of public body meeting facilities and meeting spaces. Alright, so we've gone over those four categories of the likely provisions that governing bodies would use to convene an executive session. But this training doesn't cover all the executive session provisions. And so if you have questions about executive session provisions, please give us a call, send us an email, get some advice before the meeting happens, before the meeting happens. Now, members of the news media are generally allowed to attend an executive session, and as we've already mentioned, media can be asked to leave the room when the executive session is being held for one of the following reasons. Whether that is discussion in executive session for the governing body to confer with their labor negotiator, or if it's being convened to discuss an expulsion of an elementary or secondary school student, or if the session is in regards to the confidential records of a student, or if a member of the news media is a party to the litigation or is an employee, agent, or contractor of the news media organization that is party to the litigation. Those must be excluded from an executive session that is held to discuss litigation with legal counsel. Now, again, we have a handout for you, a reference guide about the provisions about executive session, and what are the prerequisites of the different situations. And so you can see, that's what the handout's gonna look like, you'll get a link to it at the end of this session. And, let's talk about what happens when you're in executive session. And this is what Bill's question was pointing us toward as well. So like, so what happens when you are in executive session? What do you do in executive session to fulfill your individual responsibility as a member of the governing body? We've got two examples of how things may not go according to plan, and what you need to do individually as a member of the governing body. So, what happens if your public body enters executive session? And now, the conversation is getting off topic. It has moved beyond the scope of what you cited as the reason to have this meeting in executive session. So, members of governing bodies may not discuss topics in executive session other than those that are specified in ORS 192.660 or other state law that permits an executive session, even if those additional topics are related to the issue for which the governing body convened that executive session. So, what do you need to do if you're in executive session, and those conversations are happening that are outside the provisions that have been cited? So, if a governing body member is in an executive session and realizes the topics being discussed are unauthorized or they're exceeding the scope that's permitted by the statutory provisions cited, that governing body member should state their objection to the unauthorized topic discussion. And if the discussion continues on an unauthorized topic, that governing body member needs to announce on the record they're leaving the executive session, and they need to leave the session. And it may feel counterintuitive to leave the room when you know that your governing body is not following the law. But, it's that individual responsibility on members of the governing body, and documentation of your actions for the record is the only way to provide proof and protect yourself from a fine being imposed if a complaint were to be filed and a violation were to be found. Because we're independently responsible as members of the governing body to follow public meetings law. So, any fines that would be issued would be issued to persons independently, not to the governing body as a whole, and those fines can't be paid with public monies. So, moving on to the question that we've had here, what about conflicts of interest? What happens if you are in executive session and you find out while you're in executive session, you have a conflict of interest on an agenda item? So you're in executive session, you find out you have a conflict of interest? Again, when we talk about conflicts of interest, this is in Oregon Government Ethics Law, that's a different chapter of the law, that's chapter 244. So we're not gonna get into all the details of what a conflict of interest is, but, as we've had this question, we have to make a public announcement of the conflict of interest. That public announcement of a conflict of interest is the relevant part of the law here. So what do you do if you find yourself in executive session and you haven't publicly declared that conflict of interest? So, again, you're already in the session, you find out you have a conflict of interest. Here's what you need to do. You need to stop the meeting to let the members of the governing body know that you have a conflict of interest. Now, once you've stopped the meeting, you have two options. You either need to leave the meeting before the governing body starts any discussion on the matter, or the governing body can table the agenda for a future meeting where you can properly declare your conflict during the open portion of the meeting. So those are your two options. And this is regardless of whether you have an actual conflict or a potential conflict of interest. or a potential conflict of interest. If you have more questions about conflicts of interest and what counts as a conflict of interest, you can look at chapter 244 in Oregon Government Ethics Law. You can take a look at our guide for public officials. Or you can take a webinar that's all about conflicts of interest and prohibited use of office. We have a monthly webinar on conflicts of interest and prohibited use of office. And I think that we have a webinar coming up in about a week and a half on that particular topic. Or you can always give us a call before the meeting to review what a conflict of interest is. All right, so do I have any more questions about executive sessions? Okay, so we've got another poll for you. And here's how we're getting started. What are those written notice prerequisites for entering executive session to evaluate performance, discipline, or dismiss, or to hear complaints or charges? So, these are, this question is choose all that apply. And here's our options. A, send at least 24 hours in advance. B, identifies the public body. C, gives them the option to have an attorney present. D, tells them the reason for convening an executive session. E, provides how to request an open session. F, identifies date, time, and location of the meeting. And G, sent by official mail. So, choose all that apply.
Is it possible to get the session ID again? My phone lost the connection.
So, the session ID is O G E C C E.
O G E, whoops, O G E.
C.
Yep.
C.
Yep. Got it. And I don't have anything showing up.
I'm in the circle of death on my phone. It was showing slides, and then when it went to this thing, it went to the circle of death. It's just spinning, right?
Oh, no.
Yeah, it looks like that code timed out. I don't think we have access.
Yeah, it's, I lost, it was showing the slides fine, but then it, now it's just not responding.
Yeah, I would, I would just say, Ruth, go ahead and just keep going. We'll, we'll make a note of it in our, on our side.
All right, sorry about that. Okay, so we've got, we've got some folks who are still able to connect. And again, those, those prerequisites are going to be that you send it 24 hours in advance, it identifies the public body, it tells them that reason to convene an executive session, provides how to request open session, and identifies date, time, and location of the meeting. Now, we've got a true and false question for you. And I'm sure you remember this one from earlier. So, a board can hold a budget meeting in private because it is causing a lot of controversy in the community, A for true or B for false? And as I'm sure we know now, that one's gonna be false. All right, great work. So, now we're going to talk about the grievance and the complaint process. So, this is, again, the grievance and complaint process is part of this administrative category that Public Meetings Law enforces. And this is, the governing body may have staff support to help with recording what happens in the meeting. But the governing body members are each individually held responsible for ensuring that that recording of meetings is being done correctly. And so, the grievance and complaint process, which is newer from 2023 because the complaints process started in September 2023, that any individual can file a complaint with O G E C that alleges a violation occurred, not just executive session provisions, but all of Public Meetings Law. And so, with this change, there's a new process for submitting complaints. And there's new requirements that public bodies need to follow. So, this complaint filing process, first, we're going to describe what would be that process from the point of view of the person who thinks that governing body has violated Public Meetings Law. So, that person thinks the governing body has violated Public Meetings Law. What do they do? Before they can file a complaint with O G E C alleging there was a Public Meetings Law violation, they need to follow some steps. So, if they believe a Public Meetings Law violation has occurred, they must submit a written grievance to the public body. And they need to state the facts and circumstances of the violation they are alleging. Now, this written grievance must be submitted to the public body within 30 days of the date that the alleged violation occurred. And the person who's submitting that grievance must give the public body 21 days to respond to the written grievance. So, 21 calendar days for that response. And after that 21-day period is over, the person can submit a complaint to O G E C. And they must include documentation that they satisfied the mandatory prerequisite. So, they need to include the written, the copy of that written grievance, and they need to include the public body's written response, or they need to affirm that no response was received within the 21 days. But if someone fails to satisfy these mandatory prerequisites before they file a complaint with O G E C, that complaint will be dismissed. The prerequisites must be followed. So, now, what does the public body do if they receive a grievance? So, the public body is going to need to respond. And Public Meetings Law names the public body as needing to respond. That's different from the governing body. So, the public body needs to respond, needs to have policies about how to accept grievances because these requirements are to let the public know when, where, how, and to whom grievances can be filed with that public body. So, that means the public body needs to post on their website a person and contact information to whom a grievance may be submitted, and regular business hours during which in-person written grievances can be accepted. So, in the absence of a designated person, a grievance may be submitted to the public body's chief administrative officer or to the chair of the governing body. Now, if the public body doesn't have a website, they need to provide notice who that contact person is and the hours that they'll accept grievances, the same way they notice public meetings. And public bodies are required to accept grievances that are filed in person, through first-class mail, by email, and any other way it seems appropriate. But these are written grievances. And the public body has duties about reporting regarding those grievances. So, when the public body receives a written grievance from a person alleging its governing body may have violated Public Meetings Law, they need to provide a written response to that person within 21 days. And their response needs to acknowledge that they've received that grievance. And then, they need to send O G E C a copy of that written grievance, and they need to send their written response at the same time. And so, send the written response to the person, send a written response to O G E C with a copy of that written grievance. And you'll send that material to O G E C at pbgr@ogec.oregon.gov. So, if your governing body receives a complaint and you don't know how to proceed, reach out to O G E C so we can help you figure out how to follow these steps. But these are the steps. So, when the public body submits that written response to the person, they've got some options about what kinds of responses they can make: to deny the facts and deny a violation, to admit the facts and deny a violation, or to admit the facts and admit a violation. So, if the public body's going to respond by denying the facts and denying a violation, you're going to deny the facts and circumstances that are alleged in the grievance, you're going to describe the public body's version of the facts and circumstances, and you're going to explain why they don't violate Public Meetings Law. So, if the public body's going to respond to admit the facts but deny a violation, you're going to admit the facts and circumstances that are alleged in that grievance, and you're going to deny they violate Public Meetings Law. But what if a public body is going to admit the facts and circumstances alleged in the grievance? And they admit that those facts and circumstances violate Public Meetings Law? Then, that response needs to explain the steps the public body will take to cure the violation, whether that is to rescind a decision that is taken by the governing body that violated Public Meetings Law, or if they're going to acknowledge in a properly noticed and conducted public meeting that's held within 45 days of the original decision, that yes, this original decision violated Public Meetings Law, but good cause exists for the governing body not to rescind this decision. And they're going to describe how the governing body's practices are going to be modified to ensure that future violations of Public Meetings Law do not occur. All right, so just to review real quick, if a grievance was submitted to your public body, what is the public body required to do? And again, this is a grievance that alleges there's been a violation of Public Meetings Law. And our options are, A, not required to do anything, B, respond within 21 days, C, respond within 21 days, and send a copy to O G E C. All right. All right. And it's going to be, you're going to respond within 21 days and send a copy to O G E C. Because what if someone reaches out to O G E C and alleges they didn't get a response, right? Need to send a copy of your response to O G E C when you send that written grievance to us. Now, once all those prerequisites have been met and all those responsibilities have been filled, after a person completes that grievance process, they can file a complaint with O G E C. So, O G E C can only accept signed complaints. And for Public Meetings Law complaints, it will open a case for each member of the governing body because the members of the governing body are individually responsible for complying with the law. And so, we open, we would open those cases on those individual members of the governing body, not on staff. And the, the process would mean that it would go into preliminary review. And that means it would be brought before the nine-person commission, the governing body of the Oregon Government Ethics Commission, the commission themselves. So, that, those people, the commission, are the only people who can determine if the alleged circumstances of violation have occurred and can make those findings. And those are the people who determine what the sanctions for any violations would be. And so, there are sanctions for Public Meetings Law violations, but our highest priority at the Oregon Government Ethics Commission is education. And most often, the commission, when making a finding, would issue a letter of education or perhaps would acquire, require additional training for violations. But it's important to note that individual governing body members could be assessed financial penalties, up to $1,000 maximum for Public Meetings Law violations. But again, education is our highest priority. And so, as part of that education, we really want, before you get to that complaint and investigation and sanction phase, get in touch with us before the meeting happens. We can offer advice and guidance about stuff before it happens. Before something happens, we can offer advice. After something happens, we can't offer advice or opinion. So, get in touch with us, give us a call, and one of our staff can get you set up with the kind of advice that fits your situation best. But definitely, call us before it happens. And also, preferably before 4:30 if the meeting is happening at 6:00 PM, or like, a little, a little bit of time before the meeting's going to happen would be great. So, the training requirement is that every member of a governing body with total expenditures for a fiscal year of $1 million or more shall attend or view training that's prepared under this section, so 192.270, during the member's term of office at least once. So, a person who serves on multiple governing bodies may attend a single training to satisfy the requirement as long as it's within both of those terms of office. So, all members of governing bodies are encouraged to attend a training, even if it's not required. Everybody's encouraged to attend. So, thank you so much for being here today. And we've got just a few more things to go over for you. And first, we've got a little reminder poll about the resources that are available to analyze if a governing body is following the provisions of Public Meetings Law. What resources are available to you? And you can choose all that apply here because our options are, A, O G E C, B, the Public Records and Meetings Manual, C, Governing Bodies Counsel, D, your association, or E, none, you're on your own. Well, excellent. Love to see that, because all of these are resources that are available to you. And finally, after this training, how confident do you feel in your knowledge to follow Public Meetings Law? And our options are, A, very confident, B, confident, C, somewhat confident, D, unsure, but I know where to go and I have questions, E, not confident, but this was helpful, or F, this training did not help. Thank you so much for participating in polls today. And I've just got a couple more slides to describe what's going to happen after this training. So, after this training, you're going to receive two emails from us. And that's why it's so important to have the, your email. We, we need to have your email. And Charlie, we've got folks' emails, right? Anyway, we're going to use the email that you provided for us to get in touch.
Yeah, yeah, I'm going to be getting with Alexis about that.
Okay, thank you so much, Alexis. Awesome. So, that email, it's going to, some emails from us are going to come to your email. This is what they're going to look like. That first email that you're going to get is an email bulletin. It's going to have links to all the resources that we talked about today, so those quick references. And it's going to have a link to provide additional feedback on today's training. Now, that means you, it, it's going to come to your email. So, you need to watch for that bulletin. And it's, that bulletin's going to come from the Oregon Government Ethics Commission. And then, you need to watch for an email from training@ogec.oregon.gov. And you need to watch for that email, and it's going to be a PDF attachment of your certificate of completion for attending this training. And the certificate's going to look like what's on the slide here, but it's going to be a PDF attachment. It's going to come from training@ogec.oregon.gov. So, definitely, if you have settings on your email where it doesn't accept PDFs, might want to check in your spam folder for an email from training@ogec.oregon.gov. And please get in touch with us if, if you're wondering in about two weeks, you haven't gotten anything from us, definitely get in touch with us to find out how you can get that certificate. And let's see, all right. So, again, if you have more questions for us, I'd be interested to see if you have more questions. But here's how you can get in touch with us. Here's how you can get in touch with us, by phone. You can email the training team directly as well. Or you can just send a request for advice to the general mailbox, which is going to be mail@ogec.oregon.gov. And you can always consult our website to look at some resources and to get more information about some things that you're interested in. And you can look at other advice that's been issued on our website as well, because we keep all that advice that's been issued to other people as a public record on our website. You can look at that archive and look at some things that have already been advised about Public Meetings Law as well. So, if we don't have any questions, thank you so much for taking.
Can I, can I chime in on one quick question?
Oh, yeah.
This is just on compliance and enforcement. So, let's say it's raised in a, in a meeting that, okay, so proper noticing or something like that was not given by the board, and the...
Oh, Bill, I think you remuted. I can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
That was weird.
I don't know where to go back to. But let's say we're in a board meeting, and it's been, it's been stated that proper notice was not given in a board member's opinion, say, me. And so, the board goes ahead and votes on an action, but I vote no because I presented that I thought proper notice wasn't given. It's then found that proper notice was not given. Am I good because I voted no on that?
Good question. So, okay, so here's, 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 this is Charlie over here with Ruth's picture. So, first things first, if, if you know that the, the meeting was not, you, you guys didn't give enough notice. So, you need to stop the meeting at that point. You, you don't continue, because if you continue, you are now.
But it's not, it's not up to me. But it's not up.
Okay.
The meeting keeps going, is what I'm suggesting.
Okay, so if it keeps going, then you need to object Okay, so if it keeps going, then you need to object and then leave the meeting physically. Okay, so you, you need to state your objection as to, to why this meeting is, 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 uh, not in compliance. And then actually leave the meeting, okay? If you stay in that meeting, you are, uh, you are still participating. And it sounds counterintuitive, but.
Just voting no doesn't, doesn't protect you.
Correct. You're still participating in a meeting that is out of compliance with public meetings law.
Or it's my opinion anyways, right?
Yeah, well, so, I mean, that's, I mean, that's what this training is about, right? So the idea is, you know, you. Make sure that you walk away with this and the resources we give you after the training, that you'll know. Uh, what's required and what needs to be done. And then hopefully, when you go to your next meeting, you'll be aware of, of, of things that need to be in place for this thing to go. Uh, smoothly and in compliance. And if they're not, then that needs to be, uh, discussed and verbally. Cancel the meeting, shelve it for another date.
And if I could just follow up on that, because we've seen this come before our commission, right, where the meeting wasn't properly noticed. The issue is that it is the governing body's responsibility to make sure that that notice is correct. And so even once you leave the meeting, the fact that the notice wasn't done properly could still be. An alleged violation, right, that you could still be held accountable for. Once it comes before the commission, if it came before the commission, right? Because the commission has taken the approach of, well, it's the governing body's responsibility to make sure that the meeting is properly noticed. That said, everything that Charlie and Ruth just said about getting up and leaving the meeting and all of those things are the best. Option that you have for rectifying the situation in the moment.
But it's, okay. I, I hate to hang on this, but just let me go, because this happened to me, right, in a, in a city meeting. The, the meeting was rolling, it got, it, this was a public hearing kind of a thing. So we go into public hearing. And a lawyer in the audience presents that the meeting was not properly noticed. That doesn't make her right or wrong. She just states that in her opinion, the meeting was not properly noticed. The chair continues the meeting, i.e. disagreeing with that lawyer. Uh, so it goes to decision, I vote no, because I'm kind of in agreement with the lawyer. But the chair was not in agreement with that lawyer, so now it comes to you. That, that's, that's worse. So I don't, I get your answer though, right? But the bottom line is then there. I'll get a $990 fine and everybody else will get a $1,000 fine is what I heard you say, right?
No, not necessarily. And, um, it's, it's more about, and really it's up to the, um, the commission. And they do look at everyone, every governing body and the way that they've handled it individually, right? And so, um. So I can't, I can tell you what our recommendation would be, like, yes, there was a technical violation, but. You know, this person took all of the proper steps. Um, and so that would be the recommendation. How the commission decides they want to handle that would be a different matter. And like Ruth and Charlie have kind of emphasized. Our mission is education. So generally speaking. If especially, if it's the first time that it's occurred, it's the letter of education that's, that's coming to you, right? Because we want to make sure that people have a good understanding of what they need to.
Got it. Thanks.
Sure.
Well, I think if that's all y'all have, then that's, that's all we got. Is there any more questions? I heard someone chime in.
Any questions out there? Scrolling through, taking a look, I don't see any. So yeah, I'd like to, um, thanks folks from O G E C for giving us this training today. We very much appreciate you taking the time to come and do a special training for us. So thank you for that. And I guess that, uh, brings this session to a close with our next meeting date is on December 5th. And with that, we will adjourn. Thanks, everybody.
All right, thank you. Y'all have a great rest of your day.
Thanks. Have a great day.
Thanks.
I'm stopping recording.